Okay, we will call this meeting to order. This is the March 2024 meeting of the City of East Peoria Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The first order of agenda would be a call to order. Roll call.
Driscoll?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Tippett?
Here.
Sams?
Here.
Bruner?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Broschiers?
Here.
We have a quorum. First order of business is then the approval of the minutes from the meeting held on February 12th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve as presented.
Thank you Troy. Do I have a second? Thank you George. All in favor of approving the minutes? Sorry.
Hi.
Thank you. Yeah, everybody approves. Okay. Brad's new and I'm just confused. Okay, case number, first case is SU-2024-006. That is the petition of Dan Schumacher of Lumber Yard Suppliers, Inc. for a special use to allow the outdoor storage of property located at 3201 North Main Street. The property ID number is 01-01-23-100-018. Would the petitioner approach the podium? Okay, and are you Dan?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Dan, will you raise your right hand for me?
Okay, can I affirm?
Yes.
Yes, I like to use affirm.
And Ty, I meant to ask you the other day when I was with you. Do I actually say the word affirm instead of swear? Okay, do you affirm to tell the whole truth that... Now it's tripping me up. Do you affirm to tell the whole truth, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you for being my practice on that one. So, Dan, go ahead and tell the board what you would like to do at this property.
Okay. Thank you for taking my petition tonight. So, we recently purchased the Source/Dehater building on 3201 North Main in here in East Peoria. And we're looking to move one of our divisions or one portion of one of our divisions over to that building to do vinyl fabrication of fencing railing. As such, we're going to set up our production inside the building. What we would like to do is put some outdoor storage just outside, just outside one of the doors so that we can move it in as needed. Those types of products will be all vinyl. They'll be palletized and they'll be shrunk wrapped until the time that we'd have a need for them and then we'll just bring them in the door. But it would be on the north side, probably the north side of the building, right along the building, on the ground, and then possibly on the west side in the, up against the river timber woods and stuff like that.
Questions for Dan? John?
No.
Tim?
I have no questions.
Michael?
No questions.
Troy?
No questions.
Don?
I got a question, I believe. So, we've got a little drawing here and I think that's the property line that's being shown and I think you're going to be gating that as well. Is that correct, on that side?
Eventually, we would like to get a, we would like to get a permit to put a gate right at the edge, on the front edge of that drive, yes.
So, how far away from the building are you going to be looking to store?
So, a pallet's about four, around four feet deep. So, I think we're planning on just going like one pallet.
Oh, just one pallet deep?
The most, two would be eight, four to eight feet would be the most.
Okay, alright, that's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, George?
Okay. Okay, so you're going behind the building, correct?
So, this is if you're facing the building, you'd be on the right side on that drive that goes along the north side.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And possibly some at the very back, too.
Okay.
As little there as possible because it's just longer to haul it back into the building.
Back here, too, and pink up there.
Okay. Well, that's all I had.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think I had anything. I know Ty and I and Brad spent some time together. You're aware that it floods and...
Yes, we're located, what, four doors down? And we've experienced that flood. Actually, our other property is lower than this property, so this is actually an improvement for us.
Okay, excellent. I have no further questions then. Dan, you can go ahead and have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this particular case? Seeing no one, we will move on then to the next case and that is case SU-2024-007. That's the petition of Rita Jeffrey for special use to modify a non-conforming use by adding accessory structures inconsistent with Title V, Chapter 6 of the East Peoria City Code on property located at 133 State Street. That property ID number is 01-01-32-116-015. Would the petitioner approach the podium, please? And you are Rita?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you Rita. Will you go ahead and raise your right hand for me? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. And will you go ahead then and explain to the board what you would like to do?
Yes, when we purchased the property, it's got storage sheds on it and we want to move the storage sheds and put...
It's like carports and they're going to be enclosed. And we're going to, it's three of them. And I think Mr. George, he came out there today and I was trying to explain to him how it is. Excuse me because I didn't know how to get up there and talk. So, I'm all nervous. We're just trying to make things better over there where we live at.
Okay, questions for Rita? John?
No.
Tim?
So, can you tell us a little bit more about the property? You said you have storage sheds there currently?
Yes, these storage sheds that you buy from Menards or Lowe's and I think they're like eight by 12, something like that. Three of them's going to be removed. And each one's going to be removed and that's where a carport's going to go. And it's at least 12 to 15 feet from the property line and it's like 15 or 20 feet from each part of the houses and the duplex. But they're going to be enclosed, carports.
So, enclosed on...
133?
All the sides and the top?
Yes.
And then just an open?
It's going to be a door, a garage door. But it won't be electric because this would be when you move up and down.
So, would the exteriors be consistent with that of the existing property, the home, which I think is one of the, one of the codes that we're reviewing in relation to the special use permit?
What do you mean by that?
So, would the exterior be similar to that of the existing home on the property?
Not, it's going to be between the houses.
Okay.
There's a house, there's a big area, there's a duplex, there's a big, big, big area and then there's a small house.
Alright. I think that's all the questions I had for now.
Michael?
So, is the structure going to be metal or is it going to be made out of wood?
Metal.
Metal. And then you're going to place them at the end of the property? Is that how I understand it?
There should be a, when you look down on your picture, there's going to be one on the left in between the house and duplex. Further down, there's a duplex. At the other end, it's going to be one. And then all the way down at the other end is going to be another one, at the third.
So, in total, you're going to be removing three sheds?
Yes, yes, sir.
Are you going to be adding any additional sheds or just the three?
Just the three carports.
Okay. I think those are the only questions I have.
Thank you.
Troy?
Is there a reason we're going with a carport style instead of just replacing the sheds? If that's the problem?
I don't know. I mean, it's a little bit cheaper. Now I can put a lot more in there and the equipment's sitting out beside the shed, don't get in there.
And one between each of the buildings and then one at the end of the property?
Yes.
And what happens to the parking that's between the buildings now?
That's where the one shed's going to go, what the carport, excuse me.
That's where the carports will go? So, there'll be actual cars in there, not just storage?
If my car fit in there, yes. If not, it won't.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Don?
I got maybe.
I have a question or two, maybe. So, you said you're going to try to keep these how many feet away from the property lines?
It's going to be anywhere between 12 to 15 feet from the property line.
And then how far from the, from the buildings as well?
From our house to the carport, probably about, I want to say about 30 feet. And from the, the carport, I'm just going to use this carport, and to the duplex, it'll probably be about 15 feet. And then you go farther down and it'd be the same. And then from the, into the second carport to the third house, it'd be probably about 40 feet.
Okay.
And then when you go through the third one, it'd be about probably, it'd be 10 to 15 feet from the property line because there's a property behind us. And it'd probably be about 20, 25 feet from the house.
Okay, alright. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
George?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, I just want some clarification, so...
If I can.
So, you're removing three sheds?
Three sheds.
And you want to put in three carports plus a shed?
No. Removing three sheds and putting the carports in place where the sheds is.
Okay. But the sheds are bigger than, or I'm sorry, the carports are bigger than the sheds that were there?
Yeah.
Okay.
They, 18 by 20. The sheds, I think, is 10 by 12, might be a 10 by 15. I'm not really sure. I'm not major it.
Okay. So, underneath these carports, is the land underneath them grass or gravel?
If we get permission to do it, we're going to remove the car, the sheds. We're going to lay it all out. We're going to put gravel in and we could put an asphalt base on the bottom for the floor. So, it won't be put on the ground itself.
Okay.
Because they don't come with, they don't come with floors.
Right. I'm just, I'm concerned too that about watershed and that if you're covering the entire property with structures, is the water runoff going to cause standing water somewhere else besides your property or on your property or make a muddy mess? Or runoff, obviously, into your neighbor's property where, you know, that might be an issue? But the gravel, obviously, is a good drainage. I don't, John might have a comment on, on the material used. But the property itself already contains the duplex, a single-family home, and then another residence, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're already kind of...
It's a little bit smaller, the third one. I call it the third one.
Right, right, okay, yeah. You're already kind of crammed in there, aren't you?
Well, if you've removed the house laid out, if you've removed it, I don't think it'd be too much cram because like I said, from the duplex to the small, small house, it's probably a good 60 feet total.
Okay.
Between them.
Okay.
Do you know how big that, your lot is?
No, I don't.
Ty, can you look that up, go fast forward?
At least the width?
I like the width and the depth.
It's a pretty deep lot.
Yeah, I, it's absolutely deep. And maybe we can come up with that by the time we get to deliberations.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Rita? Okay. Why don't you go ahead and have a seat Rita?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, or the ZBA? The council, that's good. On this, on this case. Gave ourselves a promotion. Next case is case SU-2024-008. And that is the petition of Brandon Andrews of Prime Investment Group for a special use to allow outdoor storage on property located at 2125 East Washington Street. Property ID number is 01-01-34-202-014. Would the petitioner approach the podium, please? Okay, and are you Brandon?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Brandon, will you raise your right hand for me? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead and explain to the board what you'd like to do.
Oh, yeah, so I purchased the property last year. We've been slowly remodeling it as we get time. I own the heating and cooling company as well that is operating out of the, or the building. So, we have trailers and old equipment that's removed from job sites. We are currently storing it behind the building, just out of sight from the front of the road, of course, but there are homes behind there. We are putting fencing in. We're just waiting for a retaining wall to be built on the back of the property because of the grade, it's falling off. That will be done here soon. So, once that's completed, we can move forward with fencing, so we won't have to have storage in site anymore once that's complete. But for the time being, we're asking for a permit to allow us to store that behind our building and trailers on site in the parking lot, wherever need be, just for now, so.
Questions for Brandon? John? Tim?
Okay, so you mentioned fencing. So, can you describe where the fencing?
Yeah, so behind the property, it'd be that back building. There was fencing there before that went from the corner of the property all the way down the parking lot. So, it covered that whole property behind ours. We will be putting that back up and fencing in the whole location behind the building as well. So, it'd be like a square storage area and it'll have a gate on the, on the side of our parking lot side. So, it'll be completely fenced in so nobody can see inside there or get into it. So, we could park trailers back there and, you know, whatever's needed for us.
Okay. Any plans related to the dumpster that's located currently in the front?
Yeah. So, we haven't decided if we would prefer it in the back because we've been told we can do that towards the back of the property. With our trailers and stuff back there, it's a little difficult because we have to get stuff in and out. So, it's kind of in my way. On the left side of the building, if you're looking at it, we are going to grade that out and that may give us a spot to put the dumpster next to the building and then I could put a fence in front of it. So, we're just kind of seeing how it all forms out and then going to make a decision at that point.
Okay.
But we do have plans to move it from its current location.
Okay. That's all I had.
Michael?
What kind of, what type of fencing are you planning on using?
Just a privacy fence, either wood or vinyl.
I think that's all I had.
Troy?
And you're actually going to make a fenced-in area to contain all that? Not just fencing along the back, correct?
Correct. The whole area back there will be fenced in and then just continue down our lot.
Okay. Any idea on timing on that?
Within two to three months, it should be complete.
That's all I have.
Don?
No questions.
George?
Yeah, so you did say that you're going to put a gate on it, too, didn't you?
Yes, on the, on the parking lot side.
That way the parking lot?
Correct. That way we can pull trailers and vehicles in and out of there.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. So, the, what do we call it? The GFL container?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, you'll work with the city on that because there are ordinances. Obviously, it either needs to be completely in the back.
Right.
Or if it's going to be on the pad, it has to be enclosed.
Correct.
So, we've got some other properties that we happened to notice where GFLs dropped the container off down the street in the middle of the parking lot. And it's like, mm, okay, that's an issue that we're going to have to address.
Right.
I think the city's going to want to hold you to a date.
Okay.
Do you feel comfortable with 60 days?
If I could request 90, I would prefer, just to give me a little more time.
And then what about landscaping? You've put some landscaping in there, it looks like?
We did, do the front. So, the left side of the building, he landscaped that. It was all graded and then he put grass in. The front of the building, we did landscape that as well. The parking lot, so in remodeling the interior of the building, we tore out the existing floor and had a new floor porch. They had to tear a part of the parking lot to do that. So, once, I guess in addition to what we're doing, the front office, we're also looking at adding on to it. So, we're currently getting quotes to tear that front office out that has the big windows and we would add on a larger office to the existing block structure. So, I've been waiting on the parking lot because I don't want to waste money basically fixing all that and then have to go back and do it again once the construction's complete. So, it's just been kind of a slower process getting, you know, contractors lined up and kind of deciding which direction we want to go. So, we want to make the property as nice as possible, of course, and we've already done a lot of work to it, more internally than on the outside of it. But it's just been, I mean, I work every day and everything, too, and I've been doing it a lot myself. So, it's just taken a little time, but inside it looks really nice. So, it's just a matter of time until we get to that.
I think the fencing and the gate and the GFL container are probably the biggest concerns. The landscaping currently doesn't meet the city's requirement. It doesn't look bad. I mean, it's probably going to come back this spring and look nice, but there are points for certain types of plants and size requirements.
Okay.
And so, I mean, I think the city would like to see you fall in line with that ordinance as well, is to put in the right-sized plants for just beautification. I mean, they're not asking for big, tall bushes for any kind of screening, obviously. But with the season coming up and with you possibly repaving or doing something to the parking lot, I could see where we could split it a little bit and say, okay, the fence and the GFL container are really primary and landscaping, if it could be done before, like next winter, so that, you know, the plants are in the ground and they've had maybe the fall to, you know, get, you know, acclimated and everything. But that wouldn't maybe necessarily be an immediate requirement? Is that...
I assume that's so that they aren't dead all winter and look bad?
Exactly. It's just, we typically have timelines and say, okay, you know, you got to get the landscaping in.
Absolutely.
If you're working on the parking lot in the building?
Right.
That could wait till at least, you know, maybe towards the end of the season where I think the, the other stuff's a little more of a...
Sure.
Sooner rather than later kind of thing.
Sure. Yeah, I think we could work within that.
And so, when we, we have a motion, though, it might be some of that language in the motion that passes. And so, if that's the case afterwards, you just work with the city to make sure, you know, you get the requirements at the end of the, or the time requirements that for both, however we split it up.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment on this particular case? You can have a seat. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, and we will go into deliberations. And so, the first case we will deliberate is case SU-2024, whoops. First case is SU-2024-006. That is the petitioner, Dan Schumacher of Lumber Yard Suppliers for outdoor storage at 3201 North Main Street. First question then. Okay, will the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
Nope. Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Yes.
Yes.
Or have adequate measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve case SU-2024-006 as presented.
Thank you. Tim, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Don. Roll call vote.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
Sams?
Yes.
Bruner?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Broschiers?
Yes.
So, does this go to City Council? Thank you. So, next Tuesday, Mr. Schumacher, the case will go to, before City Council and that'll be the first reading. So, City Council meetings are Tuesday, 6 o'clock, this room. Okay, next case is SU-2024-007. And that is the petition of Rita Jeffrey at 133 State Street for non-conforming accessory structures. Will the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
No.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Maybe.
No.
Unsure. Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
Possibly.
Unsure.
Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Yes.
No.
Possibly.
Or have adequate measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Discussion?
Ty, did you get that size of the property?
Yeah, it's 60 by 300.
Wow.
By 200?
300. 60 feet by 300?
It's a football field.
What are our concerns? None? I know there are some.
Well, you're, you're allowed to have up to two accessory structures, right? Equalling no greater than 1,250 square feet. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
1,250.
1,250 max.
Tim, is your microphone on?
I thought so.
Fine.
Now, how do the other houses count into that?
So, the, one of the reasons why this is coming before the board isn't just because you have kind of non-traditional structures. It's also because you have a non-conforming property as it stands. You've got three primary structures already on the property. It, it's unusual. It's not typical. And so, anytime you propose an expansion or sort of, some sort of significant change to that property, that's one of the triggers here for the special use. So, it is, it is unusual in and of itself as it exists today.
Because it's already starting off non-conforming?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And accessory structures are supposed to be consistent with the siding and roofing too, correct?
Correct, but we also have a special use process for, for something different than, as we've had in previous cases.
Okay, and so what are we, so what's the... So that's not even coming up right now, is that correct?
So it's kinda the whole thing. I mean, the, the primary trigger is that, that, you know, you have a non-conforming use. And so the, the, typically when the zoning board considers these types of cases is, you know, given that you have an existing non-conforming use, is the proposed change improving, uh, or detrimental to the property, or is it a push? You know, what, what, what is the net result of the proposed change that's being presented?
So I think when I read through it the first time, I didn't realize that, that the petitioner was going to remove anything from the property. I mean, so that, I think, is a little bit of a plus, that we're actually getting something taken off of the land. But three carports on any property in the city of East Poria, not just one where we've already got three other buildings, seems...
Is, is it just the three houses and then the three carports, or is there more than that? Is there something else there?
Just three houses.
Just the three houses? Okay.
One, one of the houses is a duplex, correct?
So there's four residences?
Actually, four livable residences, correct? No, I was just saying, there's four livable residences.
There's four residences, then? Is that correct? Okay.
If you'll approach the podium for me and speak into the microphone. Rita, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. We're just trying to improve the place down there. We're just trying to make it look nice. That's our home, and we're trying to spend, make it comfortable for my mother and us. We ain't trying to have stuff all over the place. We're just trying to improve it.
So the carports aren't all going to be used for parking for vehicles, correct?
There can be a lot of storage in there. We moved from a, a, a four-bedroom, three-bath home to a two-bedroom, two-bath. So I have a lot of stuff, and it's, like I said, lawnmowers, kids' toys, stuff like that.
And are you set on having three?
Well, if we can compromise, I'm flexible.
I'm just having a hard time with three. I'm sorry.
We could take two. If we can have two of them.
But if you're not using any of them for vehicle parking, and they're all just...
One might, one will be used for my mother's car.
Is it a single-car garage carport?
Yeah, it's just a regular carport.
So only one car would fit in it, if that's all you were gonna do?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was thinking...
And the other two will be, one will be for storage, and the other one is put all the, the rest of the storage in. My brothers, they own their business. They do, uh, gravel, asphalt, and they got a lot of equipment, shovels, stuff like that, and I'm trying to get it out of the way, so don't look so much stuff down there.
And they have no other place to store that stuff?
So we'll compromise if we can compromise for two of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita.
Thank you.
I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve this with two carports, and, um, also okay the extra square footage, if necessary.
And the siding and the...
And that would be with all the other three buildings, uh, other structures, car, uh, sheds removed.
Are you gonna okay the siding and roofing not meeting the, not matching the existing as well?
Right. And yes, and okay the non-matching siding.
Do I have a second to George's motion?
I can second that.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
Sams?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Broshears?
Yes.
Motion passes. And does this goes to City Council as well? So Rita, this isn't a once-and-done thing, so we have approved it. It'll go to City Council, so it'll be on their agenda a week from tomorrow. And it's probably a good idea, since this is such a, um, weird arrangement, I don't know what else to say, I'm sorry, is that you be there to answer questions from the City Council members or the mayor. If some of your neighbors would show up and have concerns, then they're gonna get time at the podium. You'd probably want to be there to hear what their concerns are, and then be able to, you know, work with them, or make changes, or whatever. So it's probably highly suggested that you attend the City Council meeting.
Where's that at?
Here. In the same room, yep, right behind us. That's the, the promotion. And, um, yeah, so 6 o'clock a week from tomorrow, okay? Thank you. Okay, last case is case SU-2024-008, and that is the petitioner Brandon Andrews, Prime Investment Group, um, for outdoor storage and special use at 2125 East Washington Street. Will the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
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 Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Yes.
Or have adequate measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site, minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or concerns, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the petition. I guess as it's written with a stipulation that, with the 90 days that he had mentioned on there, uh, to complete the fence and the dumpster concerns that we have.
I, I'd like to add landscaping to that as well.
Add what?
Landscaping, and then provide that this is completed by July 1st. He asked for 90 days, which I don't think is, um, unruly.
We had talked about giving him more time for the landscaping. He had asked for that until they get the office stuff done.
Push it out to fall. He wants the landscaping pushed out to the fall?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, I don't know. Uh, what's the best way to address that? Is there a recommended way to address that, then, Ty, with various things being completed at various stages? Just go with the longest date out?
I think, Teed, you probably wanna, you know, as we, as you talked about it earlier, that maybe there's a, you specify a timeline, a shorter timeline for the fence and the dumpster.
Okay.
And then, you talked about this project that might impact the parking lot and the landscaping. That would be a further date out.
Just split it out and have two time requirements?
What about November 1st for the landscaping and July 1st for the, the other remaining items?
I'd agree with that.
That's my motion.
Did you give a points on the landscaping?
I, I would say landscaping per city code.
And, but the existing landscaping that is already done would be taken into consideration for that.
Sure.
Like, it's total.
Yeah, correct. I agree with that.
So he may meet the landscaping requirements now. They're much more difficult than for me to figure out, but...
Yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, I think currently the landscaping requirements are 140 points, and they aren't being met. But there's at least something there.
Okay.
So we're saying, if I'm hearing this right, it's the dumpster and the fence, storage area
By July.
by July 1st, and then November 1st for, um, adhering to city code for the landscaping.
Correct.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Roll call vote.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
Sams?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Broshears?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and it goes to City Council, so you heard that. 6 o'clock, a week from tomorrow, right in this room. Okay, and with that, then, um, we finished deliberations. Is there any old business that needs addressing? Is there any new business that needs addressing? And is there any citizen who wishes to take this opportunity to address the ZBA on a non-agenda item? Seeing and hearing no one? Someone make a, wanna make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting until April.
Thank you, Tim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Troy? Got it? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.